I now call the February twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty four meeting of the Wallingford Swathmore School Board to order. In opening, as you are willing and able, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Mosley, would you please take a attendance roll call?
Ms. Dole?
Here.
Dr. Grande?
Here.
Mr. Henry?
Here.
Ms. Holbert?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Walkman?
Here.
Ms. Woodset?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Wachowski Smith?
Here.
Nine. We have nine present?
I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
We have nine present.
It's okay. It's your first, your first one. No problem. Uh, in lieu of, normally we would move to our student representative report, but in lieu of that, uh, I was going, I'm going to ask, uh, Dr. Hilden if he would come up, uh, and make a couple of comments for us, please.
Good evening, uh, Board of Directors and WSSD community. Thank you for providing me the opportunity to speak with you tonight on behalf of our high school community. As you can imagine, today was a difficult day for many of our students and staff as we wrestle with the emotions of losing a friend, classmate, teammate, student, and community member. On Saturday, February twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty four, Carson Prey Harbaugh passed away due to an illness. Carson was a member of the class of two thousand and twenty five and a very active and very active in our school community. Her growth as a student and individual is remarkable, and she was loved by all who knew her. Yesterday, her mom Julie and I shared a laugh about Carson's growth. When Carson was in the hospital, we sent her a poster, and on the poster I wrote, "I miss seeing you in the hallway." Of course, Julie understands the double meaning right away. On behalf of the high school students and staff, we extend our deepest condolences to the family and friends of Carson. Our thoughts and prayers are with them as they navigate through this incredibly difficult time. During this challenging time, it's important for us to look out for each other. The Office of Student Services has mobilized the counseling drop-in center in the library to provide assistance for staff and students. Staff at Wes, S H M S, and the high school have supports available, available to them as each of them remember Carson and process this loss in different ways. We will continue to have resources in place in the upcoming weeks. This news may also be difficult within our community, and I would like to encourage everyone to lean on one another and continue to lift up the Prey Harbaugh families in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hilden, and I know that was difficult. I appreciate you doing that, and our condolences go out to you, to your staff, to the students, uh, in all of our school district, and, uh, on behalf of the board, I mean, our hearts, collective hearts ache for the family. And, uh, well, that's really all I can say about that. I'm going to lose, lose my composure, so we'll, uh, we'll move on. Uh, Dr. Marseille, uh, we'll move on to superintendent's report, please.
Yeah, um, we all in our capacity, um, work, love, support. Some white children have children of our, of our own. As, as a, as a parent, I can't imagine a deeper pain. Um, uh, so, um, our hearts do mourn with the family. There is horrific event, um, set of circumstances. Uh, and it's weird, and it's the word I can use in terms of, um, it's, it's hard because it's not move on as usual, right? And I share that if, um, wish the meeting wasn't tonight. But as we, when would be a night as we'll continue to, um, deal with this, uh, for, um, uh, for, for some time. So, uh, in, I will have, I condensed my superintendent's, uh, report. It will be available, um, uh, to the public, uh, but there are uh, a couple of items on the, um, on the agenda that, uh, at least I'm going to speak to for a couple of minutes, but the entire, uh, presentation will be, um, available. We do have um, a focus topic with a focus topic, um, in addition to an update about the strategic plan. Was an opportunity for the, um, the high school to speak to, um, all the wonderful and exciting things that, um, are happening or has been happening in the building and in light of, uh, present events, um, the team decided it was best that we would reschedule. Uh, we would reschedule, we would reschedule that, of course. Uh, so we'll, um, uh, after a couple of my slides, we'll uh, move into, um, that focus, uh, topic specifically to the strategic plan and talk a little bit about, um, uh, our progress, um, uh, so far with the plan since its October twenty third adoption to the, uh, from the, from the board. Um, there's, um, a couple of items we, uh, a lot of items actually the board is going to take action on. It is the nature of a regular legislative meeting. Its purpose is to take action on, uh, on items. Uh, second purpose is to, uh, allow, uh, community comment. So two big items. Although there's a lot of things that occur, those are the two that generate, um, a, um, a legislative meeting because there are voting meetings. We are, um, happy to, uh, to have, uh, Mr. Shioda as, uh, as our assistant business manager. As the board knows, we've been making some administrative shifts, um, and felt it was best the experience that we, um, were looking for, the experience that, uh, the office, uh, needed. Uh, he comes, uh, to us, um, as a former business manager of District of Mooresville in Bucks County. And with that, uh, having the opportunity to run an office in all aspects of the office. So he is, um, very familiar with the ins and outs of the business, uh, department as he had to, uh, manage a number of departments from transportation to food services, uh, to Chana County to facilities technology. So it's, it's great to have, um, him, uh, on board his, uh, first, uh, official board meeting, uh, tonight. I see him in the back. Thank you, sir, um, for, uh, for choosing us. And then, you know, we have a, though our official recognition for our retirees happened in May, uh, there are five, um, retirees on the agenda, uh, that the board is going to vote on, and, um, these individuals collectively, I know there's a couple more, um, have a hundred and thirty-five years of, of service between twenty and thirty-four years of service to this community and to, um, to our students. So, um, wanted to acknowledge that, and obviously we'll spend some more time in May with all the other retirees and acknowledge them officially. Um, and then I wanted to, uh, another item that is on the agenda that I wanted to, uh, to highlight was, um, our recommendation to the board with moving forward with, um, the bus patrol, uh, safe arm, uh, uh, initiative. We have had, um, uh, a number of presentations to the, uh, to the board, um, with regards to the benefits of, uh, of the safety, uh, protocol. And, um, uh, we know that it's extremely important, uh, to think about, um, the way in which the significant number, and you see that number according to the National Association of, uh, Transportation, how many individuals unlawfully pass a, uh, a school bus? Um, and part of this, uh, bus patrol system is provides the district with the opportunity to upgrade all of its, um, interior and exterior cameras, but most specifically the exterior cameras to capture and monitor, um, uh, those, uh, those violations. And, uh, we've had a number, uh, Mr. Dalton Lee, one of the representatives, came out to one of those meetings and provided, um, an overview of the, uh, of the program, and then we followed up with a number of other, uh, sessions as the board continued to have, uh, questions about, um, uh, about the program. So, um, with the, um, if the board moves for this motion, all forty-three of our buses will be, um, equipped with, uh, brand new sensors, uh, brand new cameras, interior and exterior. Per legislation, one of the great things about this, um, in addition to, uh, the safety, uh, aspect of it is that it is free of charge, or I should say there are no costs to, um, to the district. The cost is incurred by bus patrol, which then, um, is subsidized by those, um, uh, those who violate the, uh, our traffic laws, and, uh, whether you have it or not, you will never get charged for, uh, uh, for the, uh, for the service. So, um, after numerous conversations, it is on the agenda, um, for the board to, uh, to consider. We have a couple of other, uh, dates that are coming up, so, uh, mark your calendar, uh, for our facilities and finance, our policy committing. Encourage you, if you're non-unable to attend in person, uh, please check us out in our YouTube, um, YouTube channel. Mr. Henry, that concludes my superintendent's report for the evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Marseille. Uh, moving on to, uh, we move on to fo- focused topics?
Yes.
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 We're going to move on to our, uh, focus topic this evening, and, uh, Dr. Connolly, please take it away.
Well, good evening, everyone. It is a solemn evening, so thank you for coming, uh, this evening. So, October twenty-third was the adoption of the strategic plan, and that was exactly a hundred and twenty-four days ago. Uh, at that time, I shared with the board, we have fifteen, uh, initiatives, and that was a lot, and sounded like a lot, and it still does. We have a hundred and twenty-six days left, so we're right, really, in the middle of our journey right now together. Um, so we're going to walk through our process, and, and as you know, we've talked a lot about the strategic plan. There are some folks here in the audience side that helped us with our, help, help us build our strategic plan. Uh, and I think one of the things that I said, uh, I've said many times, the hard work wasn't the actual developing of it, it was actually the living it. And, and that's something that we're experiencing, uh, every day. Thank you to my directors and to Dr. Marseille. We have weekly meetings where we talk about strategic plan. Uh, it's on everyone's calendar. Everyone's excited to come to our strategic plan meetings. They tell me that, they say, "Dr. Connolly, we need more meetings with strategic plan." I think they're lying to me, but that's okay. And we also have monthly captains meetings where, where we really bring back the individuals that worked on strategic plan. And we've also have been in the process of, um, bringing back, um, our pathway groups. That's something I'm going to talk about in our presentation. So, so there's a lot here, um, to digest, but there's, and I think it's important because there's a lot of great work that's happened, uh, together in our last a hundred and twenty-four days. We have a deadline. The deadline is June thirtieth, and you'll see a lot of our initiatives, our fifteen initiatives. Um, we've created a deadline for ourselves, uh, by June of two thousand and twenty-four. And, and, and I said, as we've been through this process, we're going to give ourselves grace, we're going to do the best we can, and I'm hoping, I'm a former basketball player, that we go fifteen for fifteen, but we might not, and that's okay. But it's the progress that we're making towards these goals. I think that's really important. We talk all the time, uh, about this image, and, you know, thank you, Dr. Hilden, for coming up and sharing those words. Uh, we are a community, and we are one haven. I think that's really important. And I think as we talked about this process, how do we make the vision of our strategic plan something that really speaks to our community and get into the bones of who we are? Um, so we have five schools, and we have five pathways, but we're one haven, and I think that's, uh, no, no truer words have been spoken. Um, and, and in this image, you see our five pathways that we talked about, and I'm really going to, um, spend some time and get into those, uh, five pathways. This is another kind of view of the pathways. These are strategic initiatives. You'll notice that as I, as I talk through some of the initiatives, some are for next year or subsequent years, but a majority, fifteen of these, are the goals that we put in place for two thousand and twenty-four, and I'll really go into these as well. And this is posted on the website, so you can also, uh, see, uh, some of these initiatives. When we talk about our strategic plan, you know, and Wallingford Swathmore, we love our band, and I think we really brought everyone together for our band, um, to play in concert, right, to play together, and that's kind of the idea of our strategic plan and our work, but we really are in the process of playing together, um, as, as one, one voice. This is our vision for impact, and, and if you spend some time with us, or, or you've heard me talk about strategic plan, um, as a former English teacher, uh, we spent a lot of time drafting this, this document, and especially this vision for impact. And this was an exciting opportunity for us as a community to really come together and share words, share language, bring language to life, and, you know, we, we had this opportunity to meet collaboratively as a community on Saturday mornings. We met with staff, we met with, in each buildings, with teachers. Uh, I met with, we met with students, uh, and we really got their voice, and we drafted what we, what is our vision, uh, what is our vision for the next ten years? And what this is, this document, is a consolidation of all that work. Uh, and it's, and it's really, uh, we're really proud of this because this is truly the engagement of everybody in the community. Everybody had a voice in this. And, and the, the interesting thing for me is that when we read it, I do remember different meetings when certain words came up. There were certain words we thought as educators, "Well, this is great. This sounds so smart." And there was somebody tapped us on the shoulder and say, "Nobody knows what you're talking about." And we said, "Thank you for sharing that feedback," because now we want it to be something that's accessible to everyone, that everyone understands what we're saying, uh, because it is our vision as a community, um, and that was really helpful feedback that we received. So I'm going to go through each of the five, uh, five pathways, and each of the pathways, and this is something we shared when we presented to the board, these are images of our community, and, and each of the pathways has unique focus. Um, and if you look at the images, um, they truly do speak to our community. So our first pathway is diversity, equity, and belonging. Um, and, and the, the first initiative by two thousand and twenty-four, an equity statement is presented to the board of school directors, and that is ongoing and in the planning stages. And that is something that, it's not up here, but for next year, the idea is that we're going to have an equity policy, and, and someone that works very closely with the policy committee. A policy takes a long time to develop, but before we can do that, we need to have an equity statement. So our culture proficiency, equity teacher leaders, and many of our directors are working right now on developing that equity statement. So that is a work in progress, and you'll see that in some of our, uh, initiatives. One point three, professional development focused on diversity, equity, and belonging. And, and again, you could see this, and there's some real key words that I'm going to pull out, but essentially, our culture proficiency, equity teacher leaders are developing a multi-year professional development plan. And when we talk about professional development days, we talk about professional development work, they may be days that as a community, we say, "Well, what is a professional development day?" And really, professional development day, as a, as a, as a teacher, as an educator, it's a, it's a time for us to collaborate and a time for us to learn together. And one of the things you're going to see, here's some ongoing work, things that we've already done, and, you know, um, this past, uh, last week, we had our virtual professional development day. We've never had that before, and that was wonderful, and the opportunities that we had to work collaboratively, um, was, was really a successful day, and we look at our April Wellness Day, and I'm looking at Dr. McCullough, and we're very excited because April twenty-third is our wellness day for staff. Uh, and again, hasn't happened here in a very, very long time, but that's part of developing our, our professional learning opportunities for our staff. And you'll see some of the wonderful opportunities that we've already shared with our staff. As we look ahead to plan our professional development days for next year, we're really going to have those planned by April, uh, really right after spring break, and we're going to meet with my curriculum council, which is a group of teacher leaders, and my directors, and we're really going to say, "What does the next year look like for professional learning? And what are valuable experiences? What are some things that we've done this year that are great? Let's keep them. And what are some things that's tweak a little bit? What, what can we learn from our experiences as well?" You'll start to see as we go through the, the slides, a lot of our work is in meeting the needs of the strategic plan, right? It's already been laid out for us, some of the things that we do want to work on, and some of the goals that we want to achieve. One, one point four, learning experience aligned with student identities and grounded diversity, equity, and belonging. And it's an opportunity to engage and opportunities to celebrate our diversity as a community, as school-wide structures, uh, that we have. So again, it's looking at building-wide activities, district-wide activities. You know, many folks here attended our Martin Luther King Day of Service. It was awesome again. Another great event. This first four, that's actually something we started last year, and it's the first four days of school. Next year, it'll be the first five because we have a full week next year, so we get to add an extra day of, of welcoming, uh, students. But it's really that welcoming and belonging, that sense of welcoming to the school year, right? We could still do first four, uh, and then we'll have a Friday. But it's that sense of, the minute you walk into my classroom, you belong here, and we value you so much. And not only that, who are you, and what can you share to our classroom space as well? So that's what the first four is, but it's that sense of connection right away, that sense of belonging that's so important to, to real learning in a classroom. So then we move teaching, learning, innovation, pathway two. So learners have agency and student interest drives learning, and you'll notice, really, the key to this initiative is creating intentional unit upgrades for one unit of study or one topic, and that work is happening right now, and you could see from this lengthy list of those intentional unit upgrades, a purpose, a purposeful unit upgrade, um, in all of our disciplines, district-wide. Okay, it's really, uh, significant, and a hundred percent of our educators. So we're working on that, and that's certainly a goal that we have. A hundred and twenty-six days left to really achieve that. We look at two point two, you know, looking at what's called a core syllabus, general core syllabus, and each elementary grade level creates at least one overview of at least one discipline. So many of us attended a class in high school or college where you had a core syllabus. What are we learning? What's our roadmap for this course? And that's something that we're working very, very, um, vigorously on right now. And again, we have, we had the February in-service day, a lot of work was done there, and we have an in-service day coming up in March where a lot of our work with our teachers is going to be to really create and finish and finalize a lot of these syllabi. And they, and two point three is about professional learning communities, and our last, uh, educational affairs meeting on Wednesday night, Dr. Pratt, my colleague, spoke about PLCs and spoke about the idea of PLCs, and this evening, the board is going to vote tonight, um, on PLCs, but this is kind of planning for that April workshop and creating spaces in our schedule for piloting teachers next year. So this is a really exciting, uh, opportunity as well. We moved to pathway three, which is culture, community, and communication. And this is looking for opportunities that already exist and engage feedback, community feedback. What are some ways that we can really tap into our community, aside from just HSA, PTO, and other events? But how can we really create a list of engagement opportunities, working closely and collaboratively with our building principals, and really making our community members feel that they understand what's going on and feel connected to our work? Three point two, establish a plan for communicating with all stakeholders. You see, it's very similar, uh, in regarding, you know, what we've said in three point one, but even more so, all outlets of communication. How do we communicate? What's the most effective way that we're communicating? How are we using social media? Can we expand our use of smore newsletters? Are people reading what we're sending, or what are you not reading? So that's an opportunity for us to say, "How can we communicate better? How can we really, uh, engage all of our stakeholders in communication?" And this is exciting because I saw a sneak preview, but, uh, December eighteenth to January twenty-fourth, we had a website migration. So we have a new website, and it's really exciting, and it's going to be rolled out pretty soon. Uh, but this is, this is one of our goals, right? Creating a website where it's engaging, where people feel they, they can see themselves and their children in that website, and they can get information on there. It's easy to find things. There's not just a list of things. So this is, this is a goal that we're, we're really making, uh, a lot of headway in. And again, here, it's correcting broken links, reviewing new website template, updating, consolidating departmental information. Have things being timely on the website, not a picture, you know, from a long ago, that it's something that it's, we're constantly updating it, we're constantly keeping things, uh, going. And this Google Analytics, this is really neat. What are people accessing, and what are they not? And why are they not? And are we having those conversations with individuals? Why are they not utilizing our website? And, and what are other ways that we can really meet the needs of our community? Okay, so we go to pathway four, uh, wellness and social emotional competencies. And you'll see that, you know, really the really important aspect of this work in year one was let's define key terms. What, what is wellness, and what are the key terms that we need to identify and define? Right? And, and how do we create those common wellness and behavioral health terms? And what's a list that parents can understand, "Wait, what is it that you guys are, are, are talking about? I don't know what that is." And how do we engage, uh, our community into those conversations? How do we get input from the community about some of those, uh, some of those ideas and some of those terms? And the next one is about the positive school culture rubric. And some of the data that we're looking at is PBIS data. This year is the first year that we did PBIS at the high school. So we are K to twelve PBIS, which is really exciting as a district. How are we using that PBIS data in year one at the high school? But if, as we look at the middle school and the elementary schools that have had PBIS for a couple of years, how do we learn from that data? How have we seen progress, uh, in that regard as well? You know, we're going to look at shape data. We're going to look at You know, we're going to look at shape data, we're going to look at Swiss behavioral refers and equity reports. Are we looking at data and do we understand the data that we're getting? Are principals sitting down and talking to teachers about the data? Are teachers talking to parents about the data? Are teachers talking to their students about the data? And do the students understand the data? And that's really significant as well. You know, the paid survey data, you know, we have a preliminary paid survey data, but we still get more survey data from the state. And that's certainly something that Dr. McCullough, Dr. Marseille and myself will really dig into even further. We have some preliminary data, but that's certainly something that we will share with the community as well. Again, we look at SEL check-ins, they were October and one most recently in February. You know, how are we responding to the feedback we're receiving from our students? You know, what are the things that we're sharing with our community? What are some of the wonderful things that pathway four is going to offer these students? And then the overall findings, you know, how does it inform our lessons in PBIS and SEL? That's again, we're collecting data from students. We can't just say, well, we got the data, what are we doing with it? And how are we sharing that information where it's helping to inform our decisions as well as a community? And then we look at implementing one additional tier one universal support. And I have examples on the next page, but people say, what, what is that? And you start to see things that we're putting into practice that are tier one supports. And obviously the committee spent a lot of time thinking about ways to do that, but I laugh and I, I look at the speedy squad, you know, I've seen that in action in MPE, my, over there, you know, the nurtured heart cohorts. And we've seen that at, at MPE, at, at MPE affinity groups, you know, high school mentoring. We're seeing that now at the middle school. And then, you know, the implementation of Swiss behavioral matrix, year one of PBIS at the high school has been a real success. And again, how do we grow from that success? And our fifth pathway, infrastructure and finance. And we look at this, one of the things that we, we heard very clearly in our, in our groups was we need a 10-year capital plan. We need to look ahead in the next 10 years for fiscal responsibility and fiscal planning. And how do we do that? And it really came back to in 2023, the, you know, our GISA proposal that was approved by the board, really in October of 22. But then looking at the retro commissioning study and approving this GISA contract PO in the amount of, was $2 million. And this is a big commitment that, that the board made to kind of look at this retro commissioning report and looking at what we call deferred maintenance, right? Things that we've put off, what are things that we need to do right now? And the next slide, you're really going to look at must-dos, should-dos, plan-to-do. And this is the, the essence of this 10-year plan. This is the essence of capital planning. What are things that we need to do right now, right? So we think about the school district, you know, there are things that we need to do right now. There's things that we would love to do right now, but we can't. And there's things that we really need to wait and we're going to plan to do. And having that plan is really part of really the essence of, of pathway five. 5.2 develop a framework to evaluate and sustain budgetary practices. And, and I want to thank Ms. Mosley because we've really put into practice, you know, the phasing of budgeting and that we're being very mindful about our budgeting, phase one, phase two, really identifying what are things that we really need and being really good stewards of our resources. And I think that's really significant. So thank you, Ms. Mosley and your team. But we're making progress on this as well. And how are we able to do that? And what are, what are we talking about when we look ahead at our budget over the next, really the next, next year, but two, three, five, seven years out? And that's why we're being so, so good with our planning right now. So we do have phase one and phase two planning. We've purchased Forecast Five, so software to help us generate budget scenarios, the multi-year budget plans and comparison to school districts across the Commonwealth as well. So it's really, you know, looking ahead and really being mindful of our budgetary future. And the last one, 5.3, developing partnerships and expanding revenue sources. We do have two policies and we're going to continue to look in policy committee. One is about corporate sponsorships and that was really passed in October of 2022. And the other one was naming rights and it wasn't passed until really November of 2015. So it's been a while. So policy can also help us as we move forward with 5.3 and look at the initiative of how do we build partnership plans and propose structures and funding tiers, but that align to our board policies? So these are two of the policies as well that we're going to look at in the policy committee that are going to be part of our, part of our work. So I'm back again, our roadmap, right? And there's a lot of things that we talked about, 15 initiatives this year that we're looking to complete. And at the end, and this is really a quote that I want to end with, and I think it's really significant and it's, it's part of our vision for impact. And I think it's, really speaks to the work. So quite simply, each of our schools is a haven that is reflective of our community's values, a cornerstone of our neighborhoods and welcoming, inclusive and accessible to all. And I think that I want to end tonight on that quotation because I do think it really speaks volumes to our work. It speaks volumes to our community. And then we're back to we are one haven. And, you know, we can't do the work without the community. As directors, you know, we're so blessed to work here and be part of this community. But, but really it does come down to that, that key, the, really the key words, we are one haven. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Connolly. If you, if you have a moment.
Sure.
To see if there's any questions from the board members. Just Walkman, please.
Not so much a question, but just a, a thank you for your leadership and pulling all this together. And it, I think it hit me more tonight than it has throughout this entire process, just how much work is represented in that. And, you know, we're running the day-to-day on top of all of it. So tremendous amount of work and the, the support from the, not just the administration, but teachers. And I, we've talked in all of our committee meetings about how many of the teachers and faculty are involved in all of these. So, you know, as, as a board member, I want to recognize that it's a huge lift. We know it's a huge lift, but we had a lot of work to do and we're well on our way. If, I guess the one question I would ask, is there anything that you feel that you need from the board in terms of support? I know one of the things we need to do is move policies a little bit faster and try to get a little more streamlined at that in order to meet some of the timeframes associated. But are any other things that you need from?
I mean, if you can add about seven hours to every day to have like 31 hours, I think would be good. No, I mean, I, I really appreciate the support of the board. I mean, and I say that all the time, but the board has been very supportive of our work, you know, even going back to the infant stages of strategic plan. I appreciate the fact that the board, you know, it's our plan. It's not a plan that our administration has put together. It's, we feel partnership in that and I, and that means so much to us in our work. I think when we bring things forward in committee work, whether it's educational affairs or at a board meeting, you know, we feel, yes, that is from the strategic plan. And I, and I do appreciate the board so much, you know, saying, you know, recognizing, hey, wait a second, you guys are talking about PLCs. That's part of strategic plan. So I do appreciate that, the recognition of the board. So other than adding eight days to, eight hours to the day, other than that, I appreciate your support.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Please.
Just real quickly, I did want to thank you for your presentation and also just to say that it is really impressive as to how closely the administration's work is hewing to the strategic plan. I mean, it's a big plan, so there's a lot to do and, but there's a lot of different ways to go about it. And it's, it is really impressive that this just hasn't been sort of sent to the back shelf or anything like that. I mean, it is truly a living document in the district every day.
Thank you. And that was, that was one of the goals we talked about, that when we do this plan, we're not putting it in a giant binder and stuffing it on a, a shelf. It, it needs to be a living, breathing part of our work every day. And, and that is, and I do thank my colleagues and thank Dr. Marseille. We, we do sometimes need to say to ourselves, hey, this is part of strategic plan. Hey, you know, that we keep it in front of us at all times as our, as our, our guidestone in our work.
Dr. Connolly, I just wanted to, to add my thanks as well. That was, that was a really great update. I've been involved in the individual pathway updates, which I also appreciate your team, the administration providing those, because it was not just board members and administration or teachers, but also the community members were there too. So that was really nice. I, I'm a big fan of actions speak louder than words and you gave us the actions, which is great. And that's a lot of work that I think most people in this room realize was a tremendous amount of work, like Kelly said, on top of the, your day job. So thank you very much for that. I really appreciate that. That was great. That was helpful.
Okay.
Moving on.
Can I, is it possible to piggyback off of Ms. Walkman's ask? Because anytime there is an opportunity, though it wasn't asked of me, to say, what is it that you need? What is it that you want from the, the board? So five audits in the short amount of time that we've been here. We've talked a lot about deferred maintenance. That's usually a term reserved for buildings and, and grounds. But in the curriculum audit, that 237-page report that was provided to you and we presented that information, there's deferred maintenance in a number of, of categories. So what we need is unfortunately what you're unable to provide at the pace in which we need it, which speaks to all of the projects in this district. And that is more financial resources and more human capital. In order to bridge the gaps that, that exist. So we've identified in five major categories, approximately 86-plus objectives in terms of areas that growth is needed and we need to optimize that, that process. So I think because you don't have that bag and doesn't go that deep, is the extent in which, what is the real, realistic tempo for change? How do you pace yourself when you need so many things, but you may not have all of the, of the resources in order to do it? As you're trying to catch up to areas that at the time individuals were making decisions with the information they had, now that we're here, it took a long time to get to where we are right now and it'll unfortunately can't pivot that, that quickly. So I think the ask would be to the extent in which the plan was bold, it was aggressive, it was like many goals should be, just far away enough that you can sense it, but you really can't touch it yet in terms of your desire to keep moving. But I do think that need is about what is the realistic pace of, of the change and what can we realistically afford to move with aggressively? Or how do we piecemeal certain things together which wouldn't take a much longer period of time? And what do we prioritize and focus on? So that is a, a big challenge, or I guess the ask is, because we don't have an abundant amount of, of resources is how do we prioritize specifically these particular areas that yield us the greatest, the greatest gains?
Thank you, Dr. Marseille. Okay. Moving on to board announcements, the board did meet in an executive session prior to this evening's board meeting. We move on to audience recognition, response to items for action on the agenda. I want to thank every, first of all, just recognize it's the biggest group I've had as, as my short-term president. Thank you for coming to see me run the meeting. Hopefully I live up to your expectations. And Chief Suffollet, I want to thank you over there. He also just took time out of his very busy schedule to join us and I want to thank him for that. I know that standing over there, listening to our scoreboard, school board stuff is not necessarily always on his top objective, but I appreciate him being here. So thank you. He's a member of our community as well and I, I appreciate him being here. So we are going to move on to actions for item on the agenda. We will have time later in the meeting for actions, audience recognition for, for items not on the agenda. So just so you're aware, we do have two separate times for public comment. This is now the time on the agenda where we give an opportunity for the public, for public comment on items on the agenda. We will have time later for topics not on the agenda. As a reminder, public comment is a time for district residents and taxpayers to speak to the board about an issue that is before the board or may come before the board. It is a time for us to listen and hear perspectives and experiences from our community. While we can't answer questions at the meeting, there is always an opportunity to follow up after meetings if there is a specific question. Because we want to give as many people as possible that wish to speak a chance to be heard, we will continue to follow our three-minute time limit. However, to help members of the public that are making a comment, we will give you a heads up when you have one minute remaining so you can wrap up your thoughts. As a reminder, when you go up, please state your full name and the street within our district in which you live. Is there anyone here who would like to speak about a topic on the agenda this evening?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Joe Monroe. I'm a Swarthmore resident, live on Cornell Avenue. I've lived in the district for six years with my wife, Brittany Monroe. I'm an active community member, father of two, multi-sport coach. And I was just getting a chance to, to listen to Dr. Connolly's plan. And one of the things that, you know, kind of was, and I'm not, I'm not fully depth into the plan, but one of the things that didn't come up a lot was, was the concept of athletics. Specifically that in terms of infrastructure and, you know, kind of the term used, you know, the deferred concept. I have growing concerns specifically about the inadequate state of our athletic fields, you know, specifically that at Henderson and Cates. A little bit about me, I'm a former college athlete and since have spent the last 15 years coaching youth sports in multiple school districts throughout Delaware County, Marple Newtown, Ridley Township, as well as here. I've witnessed firsthand the positive impacts that sports can have on our young people. Athletics instill discipline, teamwork and resilience. These are all qualities that extend far beyond the playing field and into the, the contribute to the holistic development of our children. However, the, you know, the state of our fields raises serious questions about our commitment to providing a safe and conducive environment to our student athletes. I recently visited both fields and the conditions that they're in are just disheartening. The poorly maintained surfaces not only hinder the overall experience for, for our student athletes, but they also pose a serious health, safety risk. We can't turn a blind eye to uneven ground, worn-out patches, inadequate facilities. And they, they ultimately, it's just not fair to our, our kids. And ultimately, they, they don't only offer or have access to fields that are safe, that meet standards, but they also need to foster a sense of pride and enthusiasm for the sports that they love. As we approach the spring sports season, my primary concerns is what plans the school board has in place to address the quality and maintenance of our fields. You know, the, our student athletes just deserve better. They deserve fields that are not only safe, but are reflective of the importance we place on their physical wellbeing and the value of sports in their lives. You know, in conclusion, I'm not just here as a concerned resident or, or a parent or as a coach, but someone who believes in the power of sports to shape the future of our youth. I trust that the school board shares this commitment and will take action to address the deficiencies in our athletic fields, you know, through whatever opportunities, you know, arise in the future. Thanks for your time and I look forward to witnessing some of the positive changes that we can make on behalf of our kids and our student athletes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on items that are on the agenda this evening? Please.
I have a question. Curriculum is on the agenda, but not specifically literacy, which is what I would like to teach you. Shall I read?
I would, because I think the curriculum that we are talking about tonight is not, is not that. It's unrelated, so yeah, I would. Thank you. Okay. Next item, we're going to move onto minutes. Our next item for action on the agenda tonight is approval of the minutes of the January 22nd, 2024 regular board meeting. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved on.
Ms. Walkman, thank you. Do I have a second? Ms. Whitsett, please. Any discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Mosley, will you play, please take a roll call.
Ms. Dole?
Aye.
Dr. Grande?
Aye.
Ms. Holbert?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Walkman?
Aye.
Ms. Whitsett?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Wachowski-Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Henry?
Aye.
The motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you very much. All right, moving now onto board committee reports. Our educational affairs, facility and finance and policy committees are all available to watch on our YouTube channel, so you can get the full report there and I encourage people to watch them. Moving on to our wellness advisory committee, Mrs. Dole? Uh, moving on to our wellness advisory committee, Mrs. Dole or and or Dr. Grande, do you have any report? Okay, seeing none. Uh, Pennsylvania School Board Association Committee, Ms. Wachowski Smith, please.
So, the last month, uh, Pennsylvania School Boards Association uh put out their board, their state of the state. So how education is uh is functioning in the state of Pennsylvania. Dr. Marseille uh sent us a copy in our uh weekly board update. Um, the report was a result of the survey that was sent to all school districts. And uh, information from the Pennsylvania Department of Education. So some of the highlights across the state are um that two thirds of school districts reported that. Student mental health needs as one of their largest challenges, making it the biggest challenge again this year. On average, nearly half of students, forty six point four percent, were estimated to have mental health needs according to school leaders. So that's across the state. Uh, the second uh important highlight is mandatory charter school tuition payments. Were the top source of budget pressure for the fifth consecutive year. That's a large chunk uh coming out of school budgets. Uh, nearly ninety percent of school districts reported experiencing a shortage of substitute teachers, instructional aids. Special education staff and drivers, and we are no different in that respect. Um, special education population continues to grow throughout the state of Pennsylvania. In twenty twenty three, more than three hundred and twenty four thousand or nineteen point three percent. Of public school students receive special education programs and services. This represents a nineteen point eight percent increase over the last fifteen years. So our identified population is is growing uh exponentially. And uh budgeting remains an issue, especially in the areas as as we heard tonight in facilities and maintenance. And that is across the state uh. That facilities and maintenance has become uh an issue for schools as buildings start to end. Fields and grounds start to uh uh degrade because they've been around for so long. Um, in the area of student achievement, reading proficiency is getting close. But has not totally rebounded to pre-pandemic levels. Math proficiency across the Commonwealth lag significantly behind other subjects. Science is the strongest tested subject in the state and graduation rates are generally up. Since the beginning of the decade. So pandemic still has a lingering impact on student learning. Uh, more than eighty percent of survey respondents stated that their students had yet to recover. From the missed learning opportunities that occurred during COVID. They're still working on it. True for school districts, very true across the entire Commonwealth, probably across the country. Uh, state funding varies greatly by district. And that it, that's a continuing issue. Wallingford Swathmore School District has maintained eighty percent uh of their funds come from local. Funding. As the state of Pennsylvania has increased its educational budget. Uh, Wallingford Swathmore has not, it has not reached our door. And uh, what's happening is most of our rural and needy districts are receiving. Funding for facilities, funding for programs, and that is not been coming to uh. Wallingford Swathmore, we're staying at the same level. And uh, that is, those are the highlights from the report, which is available publicly if you want to see the entire report. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to uh the Delaware County Community College Liaison, Ms. Witsett.
Yes, um, I have a. School district update for February twenty twenty four. I shared it through email with my colleagues today. So I'll share some of the highlights at this meeting. The Office of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion has been active in its dialogue for diversity series. Out of the Center for Equity and Social Justice. This year, twenty twenty four has seen two events hosted. Speaking into the future on January twenty third, Martin Luther King's program. Which had a strong virtual attendance of over a hundred and forty five concurrent viewers. And the February eighth research presentation on African American soldiers of World War One. Upcoming presentations and lectures will be continuously added. For the Center for Equity and Social Justice webpage. Admissions and dual enrollment. This year. There was, on December fifteenth, there was a luncheon held. Where there were thirty three counselors between Delaware and Chester County that. Express interest in this event. Forty eight counselors attended in which they were. Able to hear about updates within the admission office. The teacher's educational program, updates from our academic division. Participation in college, one year. College tours. Um, from alumni and more. The day concluded with a lunch. And uh. A thank you for why the DCC is a special um school to attend. Moving into the new year, the admissions office started the year with the Admitting Students Day on January tenth. Twenty twenty four. There was representation ranging from academic division to athletics and campus engagement. There were sessions targeting parents as well as fun activities for students to participate in such as giveaways. And. Cornhole. The admissions office continues to her virtual live with DCC sessions. With topics ranging from enrollment process to tutoring. Back for the second year is the Coffee and Tea with DCC event scheduled for April. And additional events include spring open house, career exploration events, adult learning day. And nursing and surgical tech technology information sessions. The admissions office also sent communication regarding full term spring courses and plans. To continue sending seven week. Communications to new and prospective students for spring twenty twenty four until registration closes. There were several schools that DCC visited um. With various topics from pathways to recruitment to. The nursing and admissions and dual enrollment. Um. Specific to dual enrollment submissions, the team provided virtual information sessions for the teacher's education program. Which is a one year program that is free. Free to high school. Juniors and seniors um. And uh, they presented it to um. Our local district schools, Ridley, Avon Grove, Octaria, Penwood, Oxford. And additionally, the admission ammunition admissions team continues to recruit for multiple. Pathway programs including workforce and economic development programs. On February twenty second, the team hosted a virtual live with DCC. Session for high school students interested in dual enrollment at the college. The Student Resource Center received a seventy five thousand dollar award from Aqua to alleviate. Student insecurities and enhance student success at Delaware County. Community College. As a result of this reward, the Students Resource Center. Was recognized in January. Twenty third issue of the Daily Times. The reason why Student Resource Center received this generous award is due to. Their success with helping address food, hygiene, academic transportation. And other personal insecurities that students encounter on the daily basis since opening in the spring semester. Of Ja- January twenty twenty. On January eleventh, twenty twenty four, forty five union leaders representing more than twenty regional trade unions. Toward Delaware County Community College Advanced Technology Center had lunch and learned about. Our facilities and our capacity to train students through colleges, pre-apprentice and training programs. Also do for the research center um. They partnered with Wawa and are providing breakfast sandwiches and pastries to the Upper Derby. Center Southeast Center and Jerome Park Building on a weekly basis. In the month of January, they provided. One thousand six hundred and twenty four sandwiches and pastries for the students. In the month of February. Wait. This is the largest number of items that the team has distributed in one month since the beginning of partnership. With Wawa in June twenty, since June twenty twenty. In addition to the success with Wawa, the Student Resource Center has a hundred and fifty student benefit. From our tech support support program. This semester, as a result of these activities, the student, the student resource center. Has over four hundred and fifty students visit in the first month of the semester. And that concludes the report for. February twenty twenty. And another note is the Board of Trustees closed the application process for the vacancy. Um, on February twenty third and more information will be coming as they review the candidates. And they. Put, put up who they're recommending.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on now to uh the Delaware County Intermediate Unit, Ms. Ms. Holbert, please.
There are a couple of things related to the DCIU that I'd like to make folks uh in our district aware of. First, February is Career and Technical Education Month. And I'd like to extend our best wishes, pride and support. To our district's fifty five students who are co-enrolled through the Delaware County. Technical High Schools twenty one programs. Second, the DCIU is hosting an education career fair on Wednesday, March twentieth. For itself and most of its public height, public school districts. And finally, the DCIU is hosting a Zoom workshop about strategies. To support social skills in our middle school and high school children on Tuesday, March twelfth. From six to eight P M. There is no cost and you can sign up by going to. Um, DCIU dot org slash parent training if you're interested. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving now on to. Delaware County School Board Legislative Council, Mrs. Walker.
Um, I'm going to try to make this quick. There will be a little bit more information that we'll post with the minutes um that has some of the detail behind um the report. Um, so the big thing that's happened, of course, in the last um month is the governor's budget proposal for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Um, education funding was a main priority in that uh proposed budget with lots of attention, of course, because there was a common North. Court ruling that their current funding system for uh public education K to twelve in Pennsylvania is unconstitutional. Uh, and so this, the Basic Education Funding Commission report that was presented the month prior to that. Um, was information then that became apparent in the governor's proposed budget. Um, that report, the the funding commission report that came out of the on the finding that our funding system is unconstitutional. Documented a five point four billion, would it be five point four billion dollar gap in funding that would have to be closed to bring the Commonwealth into constitutional compliance. Um, we uh in the PSBA uh report, um, there was references to this as well. So. The governor's budget proposal calls for a one point two billion dollar increase in basic education funding. Fifty million in special education funding, another fifty million in annual investment in school safety and security improvements and three hundred million. In sustainable funding for environmental repair projects and school buildings. So it sounds like a ton of money. It is a ton of money. Um, uh, but as we were saying earlier, the amount of that that actually comes into our district is likely to be quite small. Because in comparison to the overall state, um, we are not one of the the districts that has been. Poorly funded um in comparison to others. It unfortunately is well funded because it's on the back of our taxpayers. Because we do not have virtually any uh business uh tax revenue in our district. Um, the, there's uh some, some additional point here, um, the special education portion and it's in these reports which are available to the public on. That it's PSBA dot org or com org. Uh, special education funding, public schools have experienced um just about a seventy five percent increase in specially. Special ed costs over the last twelve years. State and federal funding for special education grew ten percent in that period. So our costs have gone up seventy five percent. They've contributed ten. Thank you very much for that. Um, the um, uh, the other uh good thing in the governor's budget proposal, uh charter tuition, school funding. Um, he has recommended statewide cyber charter tuition rate of eight thousand dollars per student. If approved, um, that would save school districts approximately two hundred sixty two million dollars annually across the Commonwealth. Uh, so the, the, the governor's budget um proposal and lots of material that goes with it is available on the state's website and he's got a pretty decent um. Uh, PowerPoint that goes with that. Uh, and then in terms of legislation, three bills, Senate Bill eight oh one. Literacy achievement for all Pennsylvanians. I see that we have folks who are very familiar with that. Um, so designed to improve literacy capacity, bolster education, literacy instruction, achievement. Um, and adopt evidence based um literacy curriculum uh proposed in that bill. Uh, each House Bill fifteen nineteen student mental health days um would allow students to take three excused absences for mental health reasons without requiring a doctor's note. Very much in line with the comments that we shared about um. Uh, student mental health needs and if you were to look at this report. Um, as we said, student mental health issues, seventy eight point eight percent, um, most commonly cited instructional challenge. Um, impacting the ability of students to learn the next closest item, student attendance at forty four percent. So we do have a student mental health crisis. Um, and finally, increasing uh House Bill, sorry, sixteen sixty five, increasing student success with more. School counselor support, which sounds really awesome and we would love it, except it was clearly written by. And introduced by nobody that's ever spoken to somebody that works in education. So other than that, it seems great and it would be unfunded mandate, but um. These are all, you know, moving through the the process. We're not going to see action on these uh for a while. The legislature was last in session on February sixth. They reconvene on March eighteenth. We're lucky to have um three elected officials. Um, in our area representing our district who are elected representatives who are available to us frequently. So. If anybody wants to speak about these, we, they're available to us and um and they listen, they really do. So I encourage people to speak up. That's it for tonight.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to personnel. We have fifteen items for action in personnel. Uh, are there any items on the list before I go through them that anyone on the board would like to separate from the rest? Seeing none, you go through these. We have resignations and re- and retirements as listed. Appointments as listed, leave of absence as listed, changes of salary status as listed, changes of position. Payments of unused sick days. Twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four conference requests as listed, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four mentor appointees as listed. Twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four spring athletic supplementals as listed, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four activities supplementals as listed. Twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four activity advisor supplementals. Twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four math vertical team as included, twenty twenty four summer band and string program. And twenty twenty three, twenty four, twenty four, schoology scholars. And uh, a confidential agreement as included. Do I have? Well, all, all items in this section are, are. Well, all, all items in this section are, are attached to describe the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Uh, and do I have a second? Thank you. And any discussion of these? Please.
Um, I would just like to say a huge thank you to the retirees and a special shout out to Cheryl Knox, who has thirty-three years at SRS. And I am lucky enough, my youngest is currently in her class and she's gonna be a huge void to fill at SRS. Um, and also to Mrs. Connor, who runs, if you have girls, Girls Camp in the summer, and I really hope that she's not retiring from that. So, so thank you though to all the teachers retiring.
Thank you. Any other, any further? Comments? I would like to give a shout out to the math vertical team. I think we have Mr. Benzinger over there. I encourage people to look or watch the last Educational Affairs Committee meeting. Where Mr. Benzinger gave a spectacular, I'm using the word spectacular because he was very, he got us all very excited about what was happening in the math vertical team. So I really. We walked out of there feeling great. So please, please watch it and, uh, enjoy it.
Uh, yeah. We were commenting about the tears that that some of.
There were laughter, there were tears, it was a good meeting all around. So, uh, it's all, it's on the YouTube channel, uh, and, uh, for all who's interested, it's a very, really good, uh. Presentation by Mr. Benzinger.
Uh, was Mr. Benzinger crying?
No, we were, um. Not at his, we were laughing, he was making us laugh.
Tears of joy.
Tears of joy. It was, it really was. We love math now, uh, and he made us do some math, which some of us are better than others, for sure. Uh, okay, so moving on to, uh. Yeah, roll call vote, thank you. We're gonna do that. Uh, Ms. Mosley, could you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Dele.
Aye.
Dr. Grande.
Aye.
Ms. Holberg.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Walkman.
Aye.
Ms. Woodset.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Wachowski Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Moving now on to policy. We have two items for action in policy. Are there any policies on this list that anyone on the board would like to separate from the rest? Seeing none, we have. Where are they? Our policies. For first reading as listed and policies for second reading as listed. There are administrative regulations, uh, listed there, but they are not. Uh, there's no vote needed for those. Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. And then do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Mosley, will you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Dele.
Aye.
Dr. Grande.
Aye.
Ms. Holberg.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Walkman.
Aye.
Ms. Woodset.
Aye.
Ms. Smith, I'm sorry, Mrs. Williams.
Aye.
Mrs. Wachowski Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to curriculum. We have three items for action in curriculum. Are there any items on this list that anyone on the board would like to separate from the rest? Seeing none, we have. Barksdale School Photography Agreement as listed, Newman University Graduation Agreement as listed. And Solution Tree Inc. Contract as listed. Are there any, uh? What do I do? Do I have a motion to approve? That's what I'm looking for.
So moved.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mosley, would you please take a roll call vote?
Ms. Dele.
Aye.
Dr. Grande.
Aye.
Mrs. Holberg.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mrs. Walkman.
Aye.
Ms. Woodset. Mrs. Williams.
Aye.
Mrs. Wachowski Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to student services. We have three items for approval in student services. Are there any items that anyone on the board would like to separate from the rest? Seeing none, we have, uh, Homebound Instruction as listed. And, uh, Chester County Intermediate Unit Contract Agreement as listed, a contract with the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. Listed. Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Ms. Mosley, would you please take the roll call vote?
Mrs. Dele.
Aye.
Dr. Grande.
Aye.
Mrs. Holberg.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mrs. Walkman.
Aye.
Mrs. Woodset.
Aye.
Mrs. Williams.
Aye.
Mrs. Wachowski Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to, uh, finance and facilities. We have nine items for approval in finance. Are there any items on this list anyone on the board would like to separate from the rest? Seeing none, we have bills paid to vendors from January first through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Financial statements from January twenty twenty-four. We have a treasures report from January twenty twenty-four, budget transfers. A contract with Arbiter Sports as listed. Bus Patrol America contract, Penn Power Group contract. Willgro Services contract, V O I P Networks contract. So, uh, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on these items? Ms. Dele, please.
Uh, so regarding item E, the Arbiter Sports contract, so it was helpful for me to hear a little bit about how are you for this evolved? And I was hoping you could just speak to that briefly, Dr. Marseille.
Hi, so, um, what Arbiter Sports is, it's a company that takes all of our, our forms that we use when we have students. Um, our athletes, right? All of the physical forms and all those other forms, and it makes everything electronic. It makes it so much easier. If I'm a coach, I'm a basketball coach, instead of me having seventy-five applications of students with all of their health forms, it's all electronic. So it really streamlines the process for, uh, when our students, our athletes, um, are applying for. Uh, a new team or, or those kind of things. So it really keeps all of their health information, uh, in, in one place. So not only that, after the tryout, then during the season, if there's an injury or those kind of things, a trainer can very easily access that as opposed to saying, hold on a second, let me. Let me go and check, you know, the paperwork of the student. So it really is something that, that other partner districts are also, uh, using this as well and they really like it a lot, so.
Yeah, and as, as I learned, I think there's a, a communication component between the family and the district.
There is.
It enhances as well.
There is. It really does. So, so it's just one more thing that we're trying to, uh, increase our, you know, communication with our community, so.
Any other comments from the board? Dr. Grande, please.
Uh, just a, a quick, uh, comment for the administration, as assuming we approve bus patrol in a moment. Um, the ask would be that, um, as we move closer to understanding the timeline for implementation. Uh, that we come up with a communications plan to the community, uh, around that program to let people know that it is coming. Um, and, uh, obviously we value safety around our school buses. Um, and I think this program can do a lot to improve safety for our children around our school buses, but, uh, making sure people know. Uh, that it is coming, uh, in advance.
Thank you. Yes, spread the word. Don't be the first one to, uh, get a violation. Any other, uh, discussion? Seeing, oh, Ms. Woodset, please.
On item G, what exactly is the Penn Power Group?
Well, you can't sit there and say, Bob, I have to go up to the.
So it is, it's all.
Mr. Maroney, please, please. Thank you.
Yeah. It's work. Yeah. So, it's a contract too.
Penn Power provides preventive maintenance for our diesel generators. So what they do, they provide a service, we'll all come out. Whether it's changing the oil, checking the batteries, ensuring that our generators are producing the amount of power necessary. To support the life safety of all of our buildings.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Maroney.
You're welcome.
Very good. Ms. Woodset, does that help?
Yeah.
Great. All right. Any other discussion? Nope. Seeing none. Uh, Ms. Mosley, will you please move to a roll call vote?
Ms. Dele.
Aye.
Dr. Grande.
Aye.
Mrs. Holberg.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Mrs. Walkman.
Aye.
Mrs. Woodset.
Aye.
Mrs. Williams.
Aye.
Mrs. Wachowski Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Uh, one last action, uh, for the board, we're gonna. Uh, is the election of a Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board members. Uh, the administration recommends that the Board of School Directors approve Ms. Rachel Holberg. To be elected a member of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board for the term beginning July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, as stipulated. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any, uh, discussion? Ms. Holberg, I think you're up for it.
Yeah, I was appointed a few months ago, so getting. This is all kind of official now. We, we thank you for continuing.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Holberg. We appreciate it.
We do, we, we do, actually, thank you.
Mr. Henry, Mr. Henry, just to clarify. Because of the strange nature of the, uh, intermediate units, the reality is what you're doing tonight is you're nominating Ms. Holberg back onto the board. They actually elect her themselves.
Thank you. Okay, that's an excellent clarification. Thank you. Uh, that's good to know. So we are nominating, uh, Ms. Holberg. Uh, is there anybody who has any further discussion for that? All right, seeing none. Can we move on with the roll call vote for the nomination of Ms. Holberg for DCIU?
Ms. Dele.
Aye.
Dr. Grande.
Aye.
Ms. Holberg.
Aye.
Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Walkman.
Aye.
Mrs. Woodset.
Aye.
Mrs. Williams.
Aye.
Mrs. Wachowski Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Henry.
Aye.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to audience recognition for response to other topics. Uh, this is the time on the agenda where we give an opportunity for public comment items, not on the agenda. Uh, we will, uh, as a reminder, this is a time for district residents and taxpayers to speak to the board about an issue that is before the board or may come before the board. Time for us to listen, hear perspectives and experiences from our community. While we can't answer questions at the meeting, there is always an opportunity to follow up after the meetings. Uh, reminder, we, we will stick to our three-minute time limit and we'll give you a heads up when there's about one minute remaining. And when you go up, please do state your name and, uh, the street on which you live in our district. Uh, are there any, is there anybody who would like to speak on items not on the agenda? Uh, I saw the gentleman in the yellow, his hand go up first, please.
This is a friendly, friendly friend. Yeah, I might not be the friendly person, so I'll just give you the honest truth. So we'll, we'll receive it. I'm gonna try to do my best. I'm extremely nervous, but this topic is extremely important to me. Um, I don't do this ever. I'm a truck driver. I sit in a truck alone by myself all day, every day. When you start truck driving, if you work for, oh, I'm sorry, my name, my, I'm sorry, I'm Nick Futra. I live on, uh, twelve Linden Avenue, um. In Rutledge, uh. So you become a truck driver, if you work for a good trucking company, you can, you become part of a program called Truckers Against Trafficking. You learn a lot about human trafficking. Two weeks ago, we had an incident at Swatmore Rutledge School, um, with potential two fourth graders and two men or, so. Um, there are thirty to sixty thousand women and children a year that are kidnapped in human traffic across the world. This country is the number one consumer of that product. Um, it's disgusting. It grosses me out. I was a damaged human being before I had children. Um, and when I had children. They changed my entire being. I was a very angry, mean human being. I sat alone in the truck. Um, when they were born, they decided to make me, I, I wanna be a happy, positive human being for this world. My, my, my son. Uh, some, some of, uh, there are at least one parent in the audience who knows my son. Um. The, there has to, and I, I look at this a- as a tribe, I've been in warehouses, I've seen weird things in Brooklyn a- a- across this country. Um. And my school that my, that I went to school in, my son goes to busts up against a, a train station. Um, we live in a world where everybody sucked into their phone, nobody's paying attention to nothing. I, I watch it on a daily basis. I drive in West Philadelphia. I see drug addicts, I see everything. Any one of those people can be picked up on a daily basis by any real, and then on top of it, we have twenty million illegal immigrants here that we have no, that are undocumented, that we have no clue. Any one of those people could be part of any cartel anywhere in the world and they could allow any one of your children. Takes two seconds for them to pick up two children, lift them over that fence, get on a scheduled train. And because we're in a society where humans are so sucked into their phones, that just looks like two screaming children. Deal with their parents and they're gone. They get the, they get the train, they get on a boat, the boat goes anywhere on planet Earth. Um, this isn't, this is a reality of the world. This isn't a mythical thing. We have. A, a man murdered in federal prison in New York City for this. Um, his co-partner is God knows where living it up. Um, those people were put in place for very specific reasons. Um. Two days ago, Joe Rogan had Dr. Phil on his podcast, if anybody likes Joe Rogan. Um, go listen to Dr. Phil. He's been at the border. He's a Texas resident who was born and raised there. Are you, United States government is currently buying its own kids at the Texas border. My children, these children will not be a part of that statistic. Um. The protection of these children, of all the children in this school district, once my kids came to this earth, is now my responsibility. I've seen the evils of this world. Uh, I've been, I've spent way too much alone time in this head. By myself, witnessing, witnessing dark things. I love true crime. I'm into serial killers. I'm into evil things of this planet. Psychology is my thing. I probably should have did that in life, but I didn't. I'm here sweating my face off in this neon yellow thing. However, um, like I said, when I look at these parents, their, their children's my, my responsibility as well. Um, cause any one of them could be friends with my son, and if they're with me alone, that's my responsibility. Um, so like. A taller fence, something must be done over there, cause that's too easy access to something that moves way too fast. Um, I also, I don't know if this is okay real fast. As far as the field stuff, maybe we set up a program for the high school students. Uh, I also had a lay escape company. Maybe we teach them how to. You know, maintain their turf themselves and make an educational process. Um, I'm not a person of anger. Like I said, I wanna be. A positive thing. I wanna coach. I wanna do all this stuff. I've been wandering this earth alone until my children came here. My mom was a drug addict. My dad was an alcoholic. I raised myself. I'm twelve years younger than my next closest relative. So this, my entire existence is me trying to figure out where I belong in this world. Uh, protecting, uh. Innocent children might be that thing. I, I never knew how to make that happen, but this happened way too close to home for me. Um, and it scares me to death. It is the number one fear in my life, um, to have, and as we already. Obviously, we're dealing with a, a tragedy that's already happened within the school district this weekend. Um.
Sorry, sir, did you, did you wrap up your?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I apologize. I, I.
I, I want you to.
I'm a random.
I wanted to wrap it up.
I'm all done. I apologize. I just wanna make sure everybody's children are safe. It's just a big fear of mine, so I apologize. Oh, sorry, thank you.
No, no, thank, thank you. Thanks. I just wanna make sure everyone has a cha- a chance to speak this evening, so, um. So if, if everyone could, could be, uh, aware of our three-minute time limit, uh, who, I saw somebody else, uh, Ms., please.
Hey, thank you all for your time tonight. My name is Heather Turpak. My husband Matthew and I live at, on Strathaven Avenue in Swatmore. Um, a little nervous, but also emotional. My daughter was involved in both incidents at SRS. My nine-year-old child was approached by a strange man on school grounds. We are here on behalf of her, on behalf of our daughters and the rest of the children at SRS and in our district. You are all aware of what happened. At least I hope you are. I don't want to go into every detail, but I also feel that my side of things needs to be heard because there's been a lot of lack of communication. On Thursday, February eighth, I arrived at SRS at normal pickup time to pick up my daughter. When she got into the car, I could see immediately that something wasn't right. She was pale, but also flush. She was not herself. She went on to tell me that during second recess for her is three to three fifteen. A strange man approached the back of the school grounds along the field. There's a walking path there, and for those of you who don't know, there's partial fencing, but the fencing stops. Two-thirds of that stretch is open to public access. Two-thirds of that stretch is open to public access that leads right to the train station. This man stood at the edge of that fence, shaking the fence, and engaged my daughter in conversation, saying, wait, come here, stop repeatedly. It was luckily, she has good intuition, and she knew something wasn't right. She followed her gut, and she ran. The whistle was being blown to go in, time to pack up for the end of the day. She went right to her teacher, Mrs. Kennedy, who then sent her to guidance counselor, Mr. Lorraine, and our security guard, and I apologize, I only know him as Mr. Jimmy, um, who took her statement. I'm extremely grateful for them. They took very good care of her. They made sure that she felt okay and safe to speak. That being said, I never received a phone call that this happened to my child. Nothing. She had to tell me in the car on our ride home from school. We decided as a family that it was in our best interest to call the police. We filed a report. When the police arrived at our home at five thirty that evening, they had not received a phone call from any buddy in the district reporting the incident. Nobody from our district reported the incident that happened at our elementary school. It was on our shoulders as parents. As I understand it, for the policy uh two eighteen point two A R, when a situation like this happens, it seems to be the only policy that pertains to this. I was having a hard time navigating which one. But when a student reports an incident like this, it is turned over to the powers that be. There was not an administrator in the building that day. Dr. Huck was out sick. And at that moment, it fell on Doc, Mr. Lorraine. As I read this policy, it says that it is then turned over to the superintendent, who is responsible to then call the appropriate authorities. As of five thirty that evening, that hadn't happened. The offender and another man returned to the school the next day. Also during recess, my daughter saw him again, along with four others. She reported it right away. The aide said that they would check it out. My daughter came home and was able to detail the movement of this man for a much more than she should have been able to watch him. The school grounds should have been cleared. They viewed them along the walking path. They viewed them behind equipment boxes by the baseball diamond that is on school rounds. She also viewed him leaping over the fence onto college property from SRS property. None of this was communicated appropriately. To be honest, and I'm sure many others here would also not be here tonight if proper communication and response had been received by the administration following these events. As it stands, my email to you, Superintendent, requesting a meeting with the families of the students involved and administration to discuss the situation and how it can be prevented in the future, has still yet to be answered. To me, this is a blatant disregard for families of SRS, specifically those of us who had students involved and the breach of security. This lack of reply to me is telling of a lack of concern. This has created a situation where parents are feeling unheard. Parents feel a lack of transparency. This leads to mistrust of those who are supposed to be the stewards of our district. Mistrust leads to second guessing the authenticity.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we're we're going way over time, so if you could just wrap up your thoughts for us. Thank you.
This second guessing the authenticity and capability of those who are supposed to have our best children, our children's best interests at heart. I'm hoping that this enlightens all of you and can cause for a motion to move things forward to get some more security on our grounds. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who has anything they would like to say that is not on the agenda? Please, and please uh be wary, aware of our three-minute time limit, because there's other people here.
I timed myself.
Thank you.
Dr. Marseille, members of the school board, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Mary Ann Pinella. I live on Wall, I live on Charlo. I'm the mother of two Wallingford Swatmore students. I'm a proud supporter of my children and their biggest advocate. I'm here today with utmost respect and highest regard for their safety and well-being, not just for my girls, but also their peers, their teachers and staff at SRS. Our family's new to the district. My girls have acclimated themselves at SRS better than my husband and I could have ever anticipated. We ent, we attributed this to many at SRS, but most specifically to their peers, Mrs. Jennifer Kennedy, Mrs. Jennifer McDonald, Anthony Lorraine, and Mrs. Taryn McCafferty. These four individuals have been a godsend to my girls, and for them, we're truly grateful. Academically, we've been blown away with what's been afforded to them. Socially, we have been welcomed with open arms. The community in this school is exactly what we were hoping to find for our family. We knew we'd hit some speed bumps along the way when we moved here, but unfortunately, a major safety concern of this magnitude was certainly one we never anticipated. I'm not going to reiterate the full details surrounding the events of Friday, February eighth, as I'm sure you've all been briefed, and I'm sure you're all familiar with them. But I'd really like to use this opportunity to address some major areas of concern. It's been almost two and a half weeks since two major breaches of safety on SRS. My daughter was one of the five girls who witnessed two men on campus causing her discomfort by acting, by them acting inappropriately and afforded, according to my daughter, one of these two med men allegedly having a gun. Again, I'm not going to stand here and reiterate all of the details. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna outline all of the ball drops. I'm not gonna point fingers at every detail I personally think went wrong. But I will say that this situation could have and should have been handled much differently. Not, and not just by administration of the school, but of the school board. I have been asked by several, and I wonder myself why someone in administration, again, at this level, as well as the school, why someone proactively didn't reach out to me before this past Friday? And I really just don't have an answer. A simple phone call, Mrs. Pinella, we're looking into this. A pacifier in a baby's mouth would have been more suffice than no answer at all. All I know is that we were given the same boilerplate response that the rest of the community was given, and I truly feel that is shameful and wrong. We can simply agree to disagree on that, but in all honesty, it really doesn't even matter anymore. What matters is that we move forward. We need to use this opportunity to address major gaps such as transparency, communication, protocols, policies and procedures. To be perfectly honest, the events from Friday, February eighth never should have occurred had the event from Fri, from Thursday, February seventh been properly documented and appropriate protocols been set in place. I feel that in this instance, the school and the district failed both of my daughters. You failed their friends, their parents, and our community. I understand and know that we are in a district and a community rated as one of the safest in the state, and by no means does that exclude us or preclude us from not being a proactive community, and it certainly doesn't mean we should be a reactive one. Physical security is a critical intervention point to keep guns and violence out of our schools. So I stand here today and ask you matter-of-factly, what specifically are you doing to make sure that my babies don't get shot at recess? Please don't wordsmith me to death. I want hard, concrete examples of what we're doing to keep our kids safe on our campuses. It's your duty. What security measures do we have in place to protect our kids? Not next month, not now, because now is the time that we need to start acting to keep our children safe. As someone with experience on former school district safety committee, I look forward to the opportunity with speaking with several of you later this week. I look forward to addressing how we can take, learn from this terrible, terrible set of circumstances. Um, again, this is the first time a lot of you are seeing me, but I promise you, you'll hear from me again in the future, and you'll see my face. Thank you all for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to uh speak about items not on the agenda? Please.
Good evening. Um, this has been a really heavy night out of all the school board meetings that I've attended over the last several years. Um, so while folks were speaking, I actually thought about not coming up to speak, thinking maybe this isn't quite the right night. Um, however, I'm going to go forward with what I have to say because this is also an urgent matter um with what I have to share. My name is Mandy Ubley. I live on Cameron Drive in Wallingford. Um, I come to you as a very concerned parent and community member for all of the students in grades K to five in our district. With fifteen years in the education profession as a former elementary teacher, literacy coach, and now working for a literacy publisher that is a nonprofit and well-respected leader in literacy instruction research, I'm here to bring forward grave concerns and frightening truths to our school board and community at large. Since I'm only allowed three minutes to speak tonight, I will not be speaking toward my additional concerns with the math curriculum or special education department, uh, but with my area of expertise, which is literacy. My main concern is the patchwork quilt approach to structured literacy that is being implemented and doubled down on by our district. Have you heard of phonics patching or a patchwork quilt approach? Well, it's when the core reading program does not embed foundational skills instruction, so then another program has to be brought in to address the lack of phonics instruction, thus a patch. This is exactly what is happening in our district. And not only that, our literacy instruction is being delivered in the patchwork way, but that administrators are refusing to give this up. As was stated in last month's ed affairs meeting, when asked if we were going away from the units of study, and we were told no because we are seeing success. I would like to ask district administrators and the school board if they know how many families are having their children receive out-of-school reading support such as tutoring. How is this equitable? Additionally, at last month's meeting, it was stated that success is being seen in some areas of reading data, which is because the teachers in this district are stellar. They have been supplementing the units of study and Fountainous, Fountis and Pinell curriculum for so long just to see these gains. They are reinventing the wheel. Do you know how hard and time-consuming it is to supplement a curriculum? They are working their tails off for something that the district should be investing in so that they can actually teach. Decades worth of research states that an effective tier one program must be aligned. In fact, research states that all tiers must be aligned in order for all students to make gains. Currently, we have a very segmented, not-aligned literacy block in all of K five. According to last month's ed affairs meeting, four different programs are being implemented in K two. Let me repeat that. Four different programs. Why isn't one program being implemented that provide, provides instruction in all areas of language comprehension and word recognition? Why are we putting an increased cognitive load on all of our K five students to have to recall instructional routines and expectations of four different programs? How can a true analysis of data be done across four very different programs? This is not a structured literacy approach. This is a patchwork quilt approach, and it certainly is not fair to our teachers, nor is it equitable to our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here who would like to comment on items not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, is there any old business? Any new business? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.